All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council to order on Monday, May eighth. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Council, next up is Agenda Review and Adoption. I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Council, one other item of order. We have packed house tonight. Expect there's a lot of people that do want to offer commentary. Unless there's anyone who opposes, we are able to invoke public comment for tonight's discussion. Is there anyone that opposes that?
You guys do all topics or which ones?
Uh, new business and old business, I guess I would probably. We do have other ones on their public hearing, so. New business and old business?
Um, I personally would like to stick to our normal policy in respect to the structure of our meetings. That's just my personal opinion.
Understood. Is there anyone else that opposes hearing from the public tonight?
Yeah, I have a hard time getting behind that. I think we have a process in place. And certainly appreciate everybody coming this evening and, and, and their interest. But as we make decisions, it's important we do so in an unbiased fashion, which is why the policy is in place.
I would be in support of doing that. We have a lot of people who here have a lot of good voices and a lot of thought processes and history on these, both of these topics. And being that they're here, I would support, since it is available for us to do, that we should listen to public comment.
Seeing a full audience and some of the timelines that we've been up against, I certainly would be in favor of, of hearing public comment. We do have that at, at our discretion. It is up to council to, to offer that at any point in time within our meetings. So it is not a violation or deviation from our policy. It's simply a tool that we can opt for, should we deem necessary.
I think that we have a decorum that's set up that typically will take care of public comments and sessions during one of multiple meetings we've had previously. I appreciate people coming out and talking and wanting to express their opinion on this. And we, you know, value your written and emails, but I think that we should probably stay to the, the program.
Okay. Hearing that there is not support or majority support to offer public comment tonight, we will call for a vote on the Agenda Review and Adoption. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Open forum, public comment. We did have one signed up tonight, which is Steve Hennis.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Before I start the timer, I would like to personally ask for permission to deviate a little bit from, from that. And I was kind of, you know, surprised to find out that you couldn't comment on anything that was on your current council agenda. And I don't remember that from when I was on the city council, but it must have been somewhere along the line. So I'm asking your permission to, to read a letter that I think you all received, but I'd like to have it be part of the public record.
With all due respect, Steve, I, I think council's made that decision, their decision clear of, of not wanting to deviate on any of the, the items here for public comment. I know we've received it, and I think one of us would have an opportunity to read that aloud or make that part of the statement as well.
Okay. Well, I, then I signed up for, um, talking about the importance of parks and trails in our community. My name is Steve Hennis. I live at eight twenty-seven, two and a half street north. And I served on the council from two thousand seven to two thousand seventeen. Lived in the community since nineteen seventy-four, when the town was two thousand people. And today it's over twenty-two thousand, or yeah, twenty-two thousand. And probably with, uh, within about twenty to thirty years, it's going to be about forty thousand people in Sartell, believe it or not. I couldn't believe it before, but anyway, I'm a strong backer of parks. And as you know, uh, when I, when I was on the council, we added over two hundred, maybe three hundred acres of parkland in the city. And we started construction on a new community center. And I think we need to keep doing that. Stock River Regional Park was another park that was added here, Pinecone Central Park, and the adjoining Billcheck property. People moved to Sartell for the parks and trails. And I, um, the one that, that you, we need to continue to maintain our parks and trails. We need to add to them, believe it or not. I had a city engineer when I first got on the, um, the council here. I was kind of concerned about buying a bunch of parkland. He said, well, Steve, they aren't making any more land. And I never forgot that. And I think that's one of the things that we need to keep in mind in this community. I was just talking to April over here too about trails. I'd like to see a trail between the county and the city, out to the Wobegon Trail someday. That would be a great addition to our community. But our parks are very, very important to our community. And I think we need to preserve them and keep them here for future generations. And one of, one of the things when I was on the council, we made, I made my decisions based on how does this affect the seventh generation. And people say, well, why, why would you do that? Because I think it's important. I think we need to make our decisions based on the future. And I hope that, um, that this council will be thinking that way as well, because this city is going to grow rapidly.
And I'll have to stop you on that. I apologize.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, uh, next up on our agenda is the special presentations, fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. With us tonight, we have Jackie Knowles. She's from Bergen KTV to present the twenty twenty-two audit. So I will turn the floor over to her.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight I'm going to be going over a summary of our audit results and also a look back at the twenty twenty-two financial results. The main purpose of our audit is to provide the independent auditor's report. In this report, we provide a net to mean on the city's financial statements, and we also discuss management's responsibilities just for the numbers and the financial statements. And our responsibility is to test those files. And then this year, we are providing a clean or a modified opinion, and that's the best that we can offer. We also issue a report on internal control over financial reporting through compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. That's required because of some of the state and federal funding that the city receives. We didn't have any compliance findings in relation to compliance of grants and regulations. We did have two repeat internal control findings, a lack of segregation of accounting duties relating to one person handling multiple steps in a transaction process. And then also, we did propose a couple of audit adjustments to ensure that the financial statements were presented fairly, and those were related to grants receivable and contracts payable. The last report that we provide is the report on Minnesota local compliance, which is required by the Office of the State Auditor. So testing for compliance with certain state statutes applicable to Minnesota cities, we did not have any compliance findings there either.
Jackie, would you mind turning the mic on?
Oh, sorry.
By chance? Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to some of the financial results for the year. So first up, we have tax capacity levy and rates. For the last ten years, you can see that the city's tax levy and tax capacity have risen at fairly equal rates. And so the tax rate, the black line in the middle of this graph, has remained pretty consistent over the last ten years. And we'll take another look at some of this information in a future slide. I'm looking at the general fund, the city's main operating fund, next. First up is revenues, which were up about a million dollars in twenty twenty-two, and that increase was across most of the main revenue sources for the city. Taxes being up with an increased in, increase in the levy, which we saw on the previous slide. Intergovernmental revenues were up with the city spending some of the Federal American Rescue Plan stimulus dollars. And then licenses and permits and charges for services were both up with increased building activity in twenty twenty-two. Moving on to expenditures, those were also up in twenty twenty-two, about eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, about eleven percent increase. And that was seen across all of the city's main functions, primarily due to increases in wages and benefits. In addition, fuel costs, utilities, materials, supplies, things like that have also risen, of course, over the past year. And because that increase, as I noted on the previous slide, was seen across all functions, you can see the city's spending allocation has been very consistent over the last two years, which is what we typically look to see or expect to see. Looking at budget to actual results for the general fund, the first column shows what the council approved for a budget, which was a break even year, no change in fund balance. Then we have the actual amounts and a variance column. So you can see total revenues came in over budget, about eight percent. That was primarily due to conservative budgeting for building activity, as seen in the licenses and permits variance and the charges for services variance. Also, intergovernmental was over budget due to not budgeting for the spending of that American Rescue Plan funding. On the expenditure side, expenditures were over budget in total about two and a half percent, and that was primarily due to inflationary increases for fuel, utility supplies exceeding expectations. So if you look at the bottom line, as I noted, council approved a break even budget, but fund balance actually increased about two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So this next slide, you can see that two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase in fund balance in the gray bar. Fund balance has gone up overall each of the last five years, which is important because revenues and expenditures have also gone up over the last five years. So that increase in fund balance is needed to be in compliance with the city's fund balance policy. And the city's policy states that fund balance or working capital should equal forty to sixty percent of general fund operating budget. The sixty, the city has fifty-two percent in total fund balance as of December thirty-first, fifty-two percent of the twenty twenty-three budget. So right in line with your policy and right in the middle of that range that's stated. Then we'll move on to the city's enterprise funds. So in the water fund, operating revenues were up about three percent due to an increase in water connection revenues. Operating expenses were up about two percent, and that was primarily, again, wage and benefit increases. So this fund has experienced operating income with depreciation expense for the third year in a row. So the water fund is building up those equity reserves for future replacement and project costs. In the sewer fund, quite a big increase in revenue this year with the sale of a portion of the pool capacity to the city of Foley. Expenditures were up about six percent. That was an increase in sewer treatment costs paid to the city of St. Cloud. So the sewer fund has reported operating income with depreciation each of the last five years. So this fund is also building up those equity reserves for future project and replacement costs. And then the last one is the stormwater fund. Operating revenues in this fund have been fairly consistent over the last three years, while operating expenses were up about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two due to a drainage study and increased repair and maintenance costs. So this fund's current rate structure doesn't typically cover all of depreciation expense. It, the fund has reported an operating loss with depreciation in four out of the last five years, just from an auditor perspective that is pretty common with other cities just not having that rate structure set up in the stormwater fund to cover depreciation. And then we have a couple slides of some comparative information. So looking at the city of Sartell compared with some of the surrounding area cities. So this is the city's tax capacity rate matches up with that very first graph, and then also looks at the area cities over the last five years. So each city has been pretty consistent. And this slide looks at a couple years' worth of information for the, the five area cities comparing levy to local government aid in each city, how they rely differently on those sources of revenue for the general fund. And then the last slide takes a look at expenditures per capita for the area cities. So this is the most recently available information through twenty twenty-one. Sartell's information is the only city that we currently have available for twenty twenty-two. Expenditures per capita in the general fund amounted to four hundred and forty-nine dollars for twenty twenty-two. And that was all that I had prepared. I can take any questions?
Thank you. Council, what questions do we have?
Pardon me?
Uh, one I have is your last slide on spending per capita is always kind of a barometer for me to understand how efficient we are over time with, with our tax dollars. Is there a chance that when you do get twenty twenty-two, other cities, that we'd be able to get that updated?
Yeah, definitely. It'll probably be June timeframe.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, council, we do need a motion and a second to accept the twenty twenty-two fiscal year audit?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, one item I'll bring up is that Finance Committee did ask that in future years, the Finance Committee be part of the exit audit on that, which gets a little bit deeper in some of that discussion. So we'll look for that in twenty twenty-four. All in favor accepting the audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next item is approval of city council minutes. We had April twenty-fourth, regular city council. Take a motion?
I'll move that.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto the consent agenda. We have items A through H.
Like to pull D, please.
We'll pull item D. Are there any others? Seeing none, look for a motion on the consent agenda for items A through H, with the exception of D.
I'll move.
We have that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item D.
Thanks. Um, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong. Last year, our agreement with YMCA was at twelve thousand for the summer?
It was at fifteen thousand.
It was at fifteen. Okay, so it just went up three thousand. Did they give you a different, uh, explanation for the difference?
Yeah, we actually got on the phone with Caitlin Pol and the Aquadex Director at the YMCA, and she attributed the increase to labor costs driven by the local labor market. And she gave a couple of examples. One, the city of St. Cloud is paying seventeen to twenty dollars an hour for lifeguards. And two, that District seven forty-two for their swim instructors are paying fifteen fifteen hour with a fifteen hundred dollar sign-on bonus. So it's becoming more competitive in the area. And in order to compete, they have to increase their rates. Thus, we see a rate increase in our agreement with them.
Have we figured out, well, it's hard to know how much we would pay a lifeguard, but have we figured out by hour what we would end up paying if we hired ourselves?
Oh, gosh. Um, well, we pay our summer help, our seasonal summer help, fifteen dollars an hour. I'm not sure if a lifeguard would warrant more or less than
Right.
our seasonal summer help. Uh, we haven't, have we done that in the past, John?
Yeah, we haven't hired lifeguards. We got away from it really for just the sheer fact of finding enough to cover the hours. So we went, what year, two thousand fifteen? We switched to the YMCA. Because, you know, if somebody doesn't show up, they got more to ship over. And it just, it just got to be a, a labor issue trying to get kids to show up, you know, and get there on time and get it open.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I thought the difference was, was greater than that. So thanks for clarifying.
One item on that, we, uh, maybe through COVID, we did suspend lifeguards for a, a point in time there and leveraged public work staff to open and close that, correct?
We could open, but we didn't close. We had different staff from City Hall, everybody running over there and closing it up.
Okay.
Whoever was available.
Okay. Certainly not a long-term solution there either. Okay. Any other discussion on item D? If not, we'll look for a motion on item D.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve item D. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto new business, solar garden moratorium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a agenda item regarding solar garden moratoriums. Planning Commission discussed this potential moratorium on our March scheduled meeting. This was due to influx of questions regarding solar gardens within the community. On May first, twenty twenty-three, with a time limit modification from one year to six months, Planning Commission recommended approval of this solar garden moratorium. Little bit more of background information, Minnesota statute provides the city with the authority to adopt this interim ordinance to establish a moratorium to protect the planning process while the city studies options for amending the zoning ordinance. There are concerns at a staff in Planning Commission level to ensure that the city is able to accommodate both areas for long-term growth while allowing and encouraging such facilities and operations where appropriate. The existing ordinance reads as follows. Solar gardens, one to two megawatts in residential zones and zero to five in commercial and industrial zones are permitted by a conditional use permit and subject to additional screening requirements. This ordinance does not specify setback, lot area, height, or decommission requirements. And this would allow solar gardens dependent on the size and zoning in any location while the community, within the community, contingent upon this conditional use permit approval, which would be recommended to Planning Commission and then ultimately reviewed by city council. This city needs to undertake a study to conde, to consider the impact of solar gardens on the growth and development of the city and the land use impacts of solar gardens relating to the planning and development within the city. During this time of study, it is necessary to protect existing land uses, existing property values, and preserve and protect the rights of existing property owners within the city. An item of note, a public hearing is not required as this modification does not regulate, restrict, or prohibit activities relating to livestock production and residential housing proposals. The public hearing will occur when the ordinance is presented to council, and this will be an option for the public to have input. Planning Commission did discuss the potential impacts of the solar garden moratorium. Some of the topics of discussion included concerns with long-term growth and proactive planning as an entire community. A large item of discussion was also the Leesack Township Orderly Annexation Agreement with the city of Sartell. There was concerns of creating islands within the city, essentially rezoning properties or non-contiguous annexations. There was also discussion about the potential of allowing the current projects as produced to go, as proposed to go through the development process according to the current ordinances. Ultimately, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend the approval of the moratorium for a period of six months instead of the state standard or limit of one year. Staff discussed that the ordinance amendment could be achieved within a time period of estimating three to six months. There are currently two potential solar garden developments within the city. One being city of Sartell property, which is currently zoned I-one or light industrial. We do have a signed lease agreement that was approved in January of this year, and no conditional use permit application has been submitted to date. The second one was proposed by Enterprise Energy. Annexation approval was on April twenty-fourth of this year. Future land use of that area is R-one single-family residential. The order was ultimately approved by the state on May second of this year, and a CUP application was submitted by the applicant on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to coincide with their annexation. And with that, I would take any questions that you may have. But staff and Planning Commission would need a motion and a second to recommend, or to approve the solar garden moratorium not to exceed six months.
So how many actual applications? Sorry, go ahead.
You beat me to it, but council, any questions?
Yeah. How many applications? You said two applications. I think in the packet it said three.
There's two, to clarify.
And one is, one is cities actual? Is that, would this moratorium stop our own progress on the thing that we voted on to approve prior?
So this would halt that process. However, this is a planned halt. It's not diminishing any applicants. Right now, there is only one official conditional use permit that's been submitted to date, and that is not on the city of Sartell property.
Okay. So on that application, when did that application start?
The city of Sartell property?
No, on the actual second application.
That initially started when it was submitted on April twelfth of this year, and the April tenth, the annexation was submitted to the city.
But the city started working on this project back in October, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct. There was initial discussions back, dating back to October about solar gardens. As an actual date, there could be earlier discussions, but since Scott departed, I don't have those email discussions. So it could be earlier than October. However, I don't believe so.
So currently, we have one other than ours. You said that you mentioned a lot of questions. What does that actually mean?
So regarding questions of potential solar gardens in the community, just questions from a land use perspective, thoughts from staff, thoughts from Planning Commission on how to proceed. One was presented to Planning Commission in March that kind of sparked the moratorium discussion and their initial desire to have that presented at the next meeting. There, ultimately, I don't know how many there are in the community or how many landowners are working with solar developers, but I would anticipate that it's at least five landowners that are working with solar developers. However, I wouldn't know their actual lease agreements or things in that matter, just based on specific knowledge. There's two currently, but there could be more in the works.
And previous moratoriums, like I've heard there's an apartment being new to council. My question would be, when we implemented a moratorium, have we changed people who have been in process since last, you know, seven months along the Y way in the past? Or have we typically not, or grandfathered them in?
Um, so typically not. However, we did have discussion at a council meeting previously at our workshop regarding apartments and allowing that to be somewhat grandfathered in, but typically no.
I, I think my concern is, is when we work with developers for months on end, and then something new comes up, they've already invested a lot of dollars. I don't want to discourage future development here. So that, that would be my first stance on, on that.
Council, any other questions for staff related to the solar garden moratorium?
I just have a quick clarification.
Yeah.
Um, just for my own interest or, you know, discussion here, one to two megawatt solar garden, do you have any idea what size we're talking? Is that a football field? Is it a mile? What, typically, what is the size of a one to two megawatt garden?
So the current, um, application that I've seen, it's on twenty acres, and that would be two megawatt. Depending on size, setback requirements, it could be less. However, since we don't have those specific requirements, I would say two megawatt for twenty acres. That's what's being That's what's being proposed.
And that would be mathematically then doubled as they go in size typically?
Okay.
If that application was to come forward with the CUP process, you said that restrictions could be applied. I know you mentioned a number of concerns with height and some of those things. Could we address those, uh, problems through the actual CUP process of, of adding conditions to that actual current application?
Absolutely, you could, um, propose additional screening requirements, um, require some sort of landscaping, landscaping thing that needs to be met, um, dependent on size of trees and shrubbery and fencing details. However, um, there would be some concerns of additional applications being brought forward, um, within the same zoning.
Counsel, any other questions specific to the solar garden moratorium?
I don't have any questions, but just my comments on it, um, kinda like Kerry said, the M there. I would be in favor of the moratorium, reasons being is on how we have our zoning, um, throughout the city. I do feel like we need a better grasp on how, um, these, uh, solar gardens can fit in certain areas. Um, there's some that'd be desirable and, um, I think once we look at, there'd be some that would be undesirable on their location. So, I do think it, it is a good step in the right direction to get a better grasp on, uh, where we'd like these as a city. Um, that's both beneficial to the citizens and to, um, the city itself, so.
Any other questions, otherwise I will ask for a motion?
I have a couple of comments. Um, I, I think that the, the Planning Commission has done what they're supposed to do. They shield us and screen projects coming forward. I think that their idea of concern over, you know, a rapid new technology evolving, um, and where that goes is what they're there for. They're supposed to stand up and, and, and let us know or, you know, some expertise in that Planning Commission, very, very well-versed and, and I have all respect for them. I, I do think that they have flagged this and noted it for a reason. And I, I get the concern of how we wanna study something that, but I do have some, a, a little bit of reservation on, on, you know, the process of projects that are in, in the process currently. Um, there is some, um, you know, recognition that they have spent a lot of time and, and, and investment and so have we, as, as one of the projects is the city's. Does it hurt us to pause? Um, probably not. We, we don't have any skin in the game per se as just bringing the land and letting them go. But individual developers might have additional, you know, funds in the game and that, that pause could potentially hurt them. Is there a process around that? I would, I would consider a conversation about that.
Counsel, I will look for a motion on the, uh, solar garden moratorium.
I think, uh, what I would say is I agree with a lot of the council's comments and as well as yours. I think, um, what I would make a motion to do would be to, um, implement a moratorium for six months, um, but grandfather in the existing applications to move forward through the normal process until the end of their completion. Um, I think that helps the developer, but it also protects us from the things you were saying, Alex, as it relates to new applications coming forward until we can get this, uh, ordinance to a, a different degree. But I, I don't, I don't support changing and moving on a current developer.
Counsel, there's a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Clarification, you said six months, the proposed moratorium is three months, that's as written right now?
It, it was one year, um, amended to six months based upon Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay.
And we have a motion for a six-month moratorium, um, which is in alignment with Planning Commission. And, uh, to allow for the one project that has been submitted to continue under current ordinance or the two projects that have been identified by staff to continue under current ordinance. Is that accurate? All right, we have a motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Um, you know, I, I think as we look to grow, the pressures for development are gonna increase and ideally our ordinances support that, um, and some of the pressures that go with that, but it's not always gonna be the case. I think this solar gardens is, is an example of that and I, I think we need the six-month moratorium to allow ourselves time to formulate a comprehensive approach. But I also think we need to prevent immediate construction that might be inconsistent with the provisions of that future ordinance. And that is my biggest concern with allowing two projects to proceed in means that could be dramatically different to what the ordinance is finally decided upon.
I think these can be congruent, using the CUP process we have, looks like we have some flexibility to actually implement future restrictions that would be aligned with the ordinance that's being worked on. When I, uh, City Administrator called me a few weeks ago, she thought that they already had a draft of the ordinance and that more than likely thirty to sixty days would be more likely before they could put something in front of us. And so, I would think we would be able to deal with both of those things congruently as we move forward.
Counsel, any other discussion? Seeing none, I, I will abstain from this vote. But seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. And maybe I'll summarize the motion one more time, so we have clarity. Uh, two identified projects in flight, uh, moratorium for six months. Those two projects in flight would be allowed to proceed under current ordinance. Does that summarize the motion and second? Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And one abstain, uh, that fails two-two.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel, uh, I guess clarification on that, do we need a, Mr. Ripple, do we need an actual motion to complete that, or where does that sit?
Uh, the council's free to take additional, um, motions, uh, whether it's making an amendment to what was previously offered or failure to take any action, obviously creates no moratorium and, um, there's no protection of the planning process going forward.
Okay, understood. Uh, counsel, um, I guess is there, is there a desire for additional action or should we move forward to old business?
I would make a motion to approve the six-month moratorium as written in the agenda.
There's a motion to approve the six-month moratorium as written, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, uh, being this is a blanket, not specific, I will, um, not abstain from this one. Um, is that accurate, that it's broad in nature?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, you have the ability to participate in a vote if it's not, you know, on a permit that's yours.
Yep, understood. Um, we've got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion and second?
Is this in regards to just a blanket moratorium for six months on solar till we do study and due diligence on it?
It's a blanket, uh, as, as staff presented, yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'd ask staff if, are, are we able to move that along a little bit quicker, given the other vote did not pass with current applications? I think I don't want developers to be negatively impacted by this and, um, ultimately i- if we are that close, um, we'll be able to move this forward a little bit sooner than, than six months?
Absolutely, um, I do have a draft prepared, um, for council on May twenty-second. It was reviewed by Planning Commission already this month, um, with, um, uh, ask from Planning Commission to do a works, a work session, um, to go line by line through the presented ordinance, um, with specific stakeholders as well, um, with Excel Energy, um, CMBA staff, our staff and, um, a council member or two, um, to go through those items. So, I believe we could achieve it in three months, if that would be a desire.
I know that would be my desire.
Expedite it, yep.
Counsel, the, the motion, uh, and second before us is specific to six months and, um, what was presented by staff and so we need to act on that motion first, um, and then we could, we could take amended motions.
I don't know if this is right or not, but can we, I mean, would the council, um, Joe, would you be willing to amend that to a shorter period of time, given the information we were just given?
I would look for guidance from staff on that if, if we're firm on the ability to, to work through what we need to.
Absolutely, I, I do firmly believe now that, um, I did get confirmation from stakeholders about the work session, um, which will follow the next Planning Commission meeting in June. So, I do think we could do that within, the max would be three months, just to make sure legal can review the proposed ordinance as well.
Okay, I am comfortable with that if we want to make an, an amendment.
Uh, there's an amendment to change from six months to three months. Is there, uh, still a second on that? There's a motion and second on that? Uh, counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of a three-month blanket moratorium as stated, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. That passes four to one. Counsel, onto old business, uh, Pine Ridge Golf Course.
We have a PowerPoint we'll throw on the screen here. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, this is a continuation of, of a discussion point, um, stretching back last year. Um, after the closed council meeting in March, um, city staff, uh, went back and, and talked to the current operator of the golf course as well as, um, the buyer. Um, a few changes that I, I wanna highlight. First, maybe we can talk a bit about this, uh, screen up here. So, um, as the city knows, um, as council knows, that golf course, um, is currently eighty-one acres, maintained and operated by a third-party private operator. The lease payments are dedicated to the arena. The city council back, uh, about a year ago had an appraisal done on the property. We've talked at length, uh, in several sessions and in the closed session about that appraisal. There are some things not included in that appraisal that's become apparent. There was some inclusion of equipment that, is that not?
Sorry, is your mic on?
It is on.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Um, and then, um, the appraisal really evaluated the property before the city took RFPs for, um, the sale of the golf course. And so, it did not include some of the restrictive covenants that the council, uh, required as part of that RFP process. So, that's, that's kind of the historical background. And here's kind of procedurally where we've come. The council took RFPs throughout the fall, um, and received, uh, four of them. The, the current buyer is, is the party who offered, uh, the greatest amount of money for that. After taking direction from council, we've gone back and, uh, prepared a purchase agreement as well as development agreement. Following that March discussion, um, we've ended up with the rather long document that, that's in the packet, which is purchase agreement together with a number of exhibits that include a development agreement that would have to be entered into between the buyer and the city prior to closing. Um, so some of the key terms that have changed since March. Staff did meet with, uh, current operators of the golf course. You know, the logistics of the lease require a, a one-year notice to terminate the lease. And so, that creates some difficulty from a development perspective because you have potentially a buyer taking the property uh, subject to a lease that they're stuck with for a year. And so, the initial draft of the purchase agreement contemplating closing in April or May of this year, having that, um, buyer take the property subject to that lease for the twenty-twenty-three golf season and potentially some of twenty-twenty-four if, if things got stretched out with the closing. Um, so, one of the key terms that have changed in the agreements that are in the packet tonight would be for the, the lease to be terminated November fifteenth. Uh, that's something that we had some good discussions with the current operators, uh, and they've agreed to that. Uh, and then the closing on the property would actually be January of twenty-twenty-four. So, that, that would provide the, the buyer the ability to, um, plan for and undertake development without having to worry about, um, kind of working around an operator and, and lease terms that, that they're kind of stuck with. Let's see. One of the other significant changes that the council asked for was there was some concern that if the city moves forward with terminating the lease, you know, there's a, there's a early lease termination penalty payment that's required under the lease. And so, the council expressed concerns that if we go ahead and make that termination and something happens with the closing and that falls through, that the city's potentially out that money and out an operator. And so, the way we've addressed that in the current purchase agreement is we have, one, increased the amount of the earnest money and we've also made it non-refundable. So, if something does go south with the purchase agreement and that sale falls through, there is, uh, recourse for the city to not be out that, um, sixty thousand dollar early penalty fee for the lease. An additional term in that purchase agreement is that, uh, after the lease would terminate on the fifteenth of November, there'd be, uh, a meeting with the, uh, city and the buyer to walk through inventory, uh, personal property. There is some question as to what is the city's and, and what is the current operators? And so, we'd have the ability to iron out those questions a couple of months in advance of closing. There's a bill of sale in the purchase agreement, we'd complete that at that time. The prior draft of the purchase agreement, um, was silent as to the parking lot, um, irrigation system. And so, both of those provisions have been incorporated into both the purchase agreement and the development agreement. So, the parking lot improvements are required to be made, uh, prior to the completion or the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the new, uh, improvements that would go on the site. So, that's your assurance that that happens. Uh, we've also addressed the irrigation in the development agreement, um, which requires that, you know, a functional irrigation system, uh, is a condition of the sale. So, if that, if that system goes kaput, you've got that ability to say, no, that, that must be replaced. Having a functional irrigation system is, is essential to operating a golf course here in Minnesota. The, because of the pushback, uh, closing, the time constraints put on this agreement would be for the improvements to start no later than November of twenty-twenty-four. The buyers indicated that probably that might happen earlier, but wanna have some flexibility with the golf season. Uh, and then those improvements would have to be completed by, uh, the following October. So, um, failure to complete the improvements, uh, would be a default under the agreement. Failure to continue to operate the golf course is a default. Failure to maintain the golf course to the standards that we've laid out with some reference to, uh, US PGA requirements would be a default. And the city's recourse in the event of the default, after notice and an opportunity to cure, is to take the property back. So, um, what you've accomplished through that is the assurance that, uh, the property will be maintained and continue as a golf course for the next thirty years at a minimum. Uh, let's see. Just last point, so that development agreement is a fairly final draft, but, um, a, a formal final draft would come to the council prior to the closing. That would be executed no later than the closing. At that point, we would have, uh, detailed development plans incorporated in there. You've seen some concepts, um, but the rubber really hits the road with putting the site plan together. But the rubber really hits the road with putting the site plan together, um, going through kind of the zoning analysis of what's actually proposed. Those details would be incorporated in that final development agreement. The forms there is, is just some of the details that will have to be executed. Let's see. Hit the next slide. I think I've covered some of this. So there was some question about sale price or, or revenue from this, um, agreement. And so one of the things that happens with the pushback of the, of the closing is that, um, had the city closed in April or May, the lease revenue would have gone to the buyer for the twenty-twenty-three season. That's obviously going to go to the city while the city still owns it. So there is some additional revenue reflected there. Yeah, we've got some comments on the slide about, um, some of those items that were not addressed in the appraisal. And then again, the, the earnest money, that's your recourse for ensuring that the city's not left holding the bag if the, the lease is terminated.
And I can touch on some of the financial pertinent information. So if this decision is to sell, it will result in a net decrease to our net position in twenty-twenty-three because the retired land will exceed the proceeds from the sale. But the positives would be using the proceeds to improve our existing parks. Increased revenue from development and permit fees when, um, development does materialize on this new property. Increase in tax capacity. We're not currently realizing any at this point because it's a non-exempt property. So it would result in additional revenue for the city. And also achieving our goal of this redevelopment opportunity to build off our foundational success and add additional amenities, which have been a longstanding request from community surveys, to that quote at the bottom there from our press release in October of twenty-twenty-two. This is a bit of a lengthy slide, but to summarize, if this, this decision is not to sell, we'd need to begin allocating more resources, which will more than likely result in a levy increase or potentially debt increase. Because we have not established a funding source for the golf course improvements. The lease revenue we have received and will continue to receive if the decision is not to sell has been committed to different organizations since the inception of the lease. So we will need to fund any improvements, more than likely through property taxes. So I'll turn it over to council for any questions and discussion.
Council, um, I guess first let's get into questions specific to, uh, what was presented to us. And then once we have our questions answered from staff, uh, it'd be appropriate then to get into discussion with a motion and a second that will lead us there. Uh, any questions for staff to begin?
Rob, you talked about proceeds, but then you also talked about, um, a lot of these dollars already being committed to other projects. Could you please walk us through the actual financials of the actual proceeds based on the sale price?
Sure. Um, so the obligation with the, uh, Sartell Youth Rec Center, um, would be from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty-two, uh, which is our current lease with the golf operators. Net present value at a seven percent discount rate would be two hundred and sixty-three thousand, uh, in net present value of the dollars that we would earn from the golf course and then also obligate to, um, Sartell Youth Recreation Center.
We slide on one of the slides and there's, there's no page numbers. So, uh, but I believe, Mr. Ripple, you had talked about, um, the fact that the closing's been delayed, uh, in a closing session. I don't know if you have, do you have transcripts from the closing session that we had at all from it being recorded?
The meeting is recorded, but I don't have transcripts.
I personally thought the council had said to come back to a number of four seventy-five, but we, we can use the four fifty, but we should probably verify that. Even at four fifty, the, the math here says that the lease proceeds originally were going to go to, um, for this year, um, to the actual purchaser of the property if they bought it in the spring. I don't know when you sell a property that you would give the last year's net profits to the actual buyer. So how does that get us to the four fifty?
Well, if you have a closing prior to the rent being due, typically the lease is assigned with the real estate.
But the lease will be terminated. So I would assume that that would actually invoke probably a payment upon termination. So the lease is actually not transferring, correct?
Correct. Under the current scenario, what was proposed previously was to close and have the lease be terminated a year from now. And so you'd have rent payment in the interim. I suppose you could assign the lease without assigning the payments, but presumably our buyer would take a discount on the price for that.
Yeah, but I, I, I believe the lease is being terminated and, um, I, I don't know that we're assigning it, are we?
But remember, there's a, there's a one-year period. You have to provide a year's notice to terminate the lease. And so it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have terminated until a year from whatever that point had been. So twenty-twenty-four, you'd have two lease payments due in the course of that. I think it's May and October.
Okay. So there's one-year guarantee on the lease. Also on that slide, it talks about the praise value of seven seventy-five when the actual appraised value is eight forty, I believe, without the lease. Uh, and I believe FF and E, which is furniture fixtures and equipment, um, were about sixty thousand dollars in value based on the appraisal, if I, if I remember correctly. Why haven't we not evaluated the actual asset side of those furnitures and fixtures and equipment?
I can't speak to that. That was done a year ago.
Okay. So if it's only guaranteed for a year, I think it's safe for us to think that the actual appraise amount is, is eight forty, um, not seven seventy-five. I also would, um, bring forward something that's been brought for us. We've, we've had, uh, first of all, I'm a little disheartened that we weren't allowing community to ever speak on this. We haven't had a puggle open forum. We haven't talked to golfers. We've kind of been enclosed, behind closed doors a little bit on this one. And the fact that we voted down the ability to hear two former mayors, two former council members potentially who have all, uh, emailed all of us, I think we're all aware of that, to bring that forward. I, I just, I'm disheartened by that. But I'll, I'll bring forward a question that was asked by, um, I think both former mayors. In two thousand and eight, um, they used regional sales tax dollars to purchase this land, green space. And the rules in two thousand and eight were different, uh, than they are now when, uh, they voted in two thousand and eight. And they were under the impression that they could not be put up for sale. This was in an, uh, email to all of us. Have you done the due diligence, um, on the rules of using that regional sales tax dollars from two thousand and eight rules? That verify really unequivocally that we have the legal right to even entertain a sale on this?
Would you like me to stab at that? Um, so I consulted with Anna, um, back in late summer. There's not any kind of deed restriction or grant restriction. There is in how you spend those funds, but there is not an ongoing obligation for, you know, the preservation or, or use of that purchased property after that. So I don't believe there is any obligation to forever have that be publicly owned property.
Rob, a question for you on the evaluation, uh, of the biz, operating business. Why have we not, uh, evaluated the value of the operating business that's actually coming along with this property as, um, significantly more value than the actual appraisal itself?
Yeah, we had requested profit and loss statements and were not granted the profit and loss statement. So that's what makes the appraisal tough when we aren't able to evaluate the current business. So it has listed eight forty, but, um, could be very different if we were to look at the financials.
Rob, we've received, um, financials in the past. Um, actually, speaking of the golf operator, um, they actually said they would provide them. So I'm surprised that we haven't received them. But there's, there's something in our, in, used by appraisals called net income multiplier by industry. It's used pretty standard. Um, it seems like we've made a lot of estimates on the liability side of this. I think we're estimating from a parking lot that might cost a hundred thousand, potentially, I think it says here, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars on repairs, um, for the actual clubhouse. But it, we even say that it could be, um, a large range because we're not actually sure. Have we received bids on all of those liabilities?
John, can you speak to whether or not we've received bids on those improvements?
Just some, just some very vague questions and asking, you know, some vague numbers or ballpark figures, yes.
I know in my business, we, we do parking lots a lot. It's usually two dollars a square foot. It's about forty thousand square feet out there. So that number could be eighty, not a hundred. Um, we don't have bids. I, I think in, in doing an assessment on the liability side, uh, one question I would have is on page, um, fifty-six, I believe, of your appraisal, uh, or of your purchase agreement. We state, or I'm sorry, page fifty-five, uh, of the purchase agreement. Uh, here's, and I'll quote, "The city obtained an appraisal on the property dated April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Although the sale price in the purchase agreement is below the appraised value, the parties agree that the sale is not substantially below the fair market value and certainly not one hundred and fifty thousand dollars below market value. Because the appraisal incorrectly included privately owned equipment, did not make adjustments for necessary parking and irrigation, uh, improvements that are at the end of their useful life, uh, and did not consider the obligation of the improvements or the restriction of development, the sale of the property from the city to the developer is not a business subsidy for the purposes of Minnesota statute, chapter one-one-six J." In the appraisal, uh, I, I've, I've looked through the appraisal. And on the appraisal, multiple times, it does talk about taking into the conditional use. Uh, I believe it's on three different pages, uh, where the, uh, appraiser actually does say that. I'll read on the very first, uh, page three, uh, three I's. "There is reportedly a deed restriction of thirty-four years in length, which requires the subject to operate as a golf course. No documents were provided to the appraiser. Appraised value assumes the subject does not have immediate redevelopment potential. If found to be otherwise, appraisal value could differ." Uh, next page, page four, "The subject could have redevelopment potential for an alternative use residential. The appraised value could differ." So, um, and I believe on page fourteen, I won't go to that one either, but multiple times it talks about the conditional use of this property being actually evaluated in this, uh, appraisal. Um, so the fact that we're using the, uh, that as a devaluer, I think is inaccurate based on the appraisal. It also says in this appraisal multiple times that there's an adequate parking lot. So I'm not sure if that could be included. I guess where I'm going with this is we don't have bids, uh, on the actual items that you're listing here. We've not valued any FF and E, which would be an asset on this property, and nor have we actually evaluated the business. If you look at, um, industry standards in a value-winning business, I think we could make similar estimates as we are on the liability side. I think we know at minimum, they've been paying us the thirty thousand dollar lease, uh, every year since two thousand and eight. We know that that would be considered income if we overtook the property. We also know that the golf core operator, or operators have said to us, they've been profitable on top of that the last four out of the, or four out of six years. Uh, so if we got the profit and loss statement, my, my assumption is we'd be able to evaluate this business. Golf courses are evaluated at a two-point-three-nine percent of net earnings, um, or point-six-one of gross revenue. And so if you just did simple math and, since we're using hypotheticals here, there's no way that this business is not worth two to three hundred thousand dollars. When you take the appraised value of eight forty, you added furniture and equipment, which was valued at sixty thousand dollars. We say in this proposal that it's zero. You're saying we have to go through a property list to say, is it zero or sixty? But it's probably somewhere in between. We have dollar amounts to actually add to the value of this appraisal. When you say in the appraisal, this certainly is not one hundred and fifty thousand dollars below market value based on state statute. Rob, my next question is, do we have a subsidy limit in our current policy that's different than one fifty? Because that's the actual maximum. Do we think a subsidy, or do we define that in our city's policy?
I don't recall the city pub subsidy policy, um, but within Minnesota state law, would this be considered a subsidy? Adam?
So state law has a couple of different definitions for a subsidy. The requirement for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold relates to the requirement to have a business subsidy agreement. The other threshold is, uh, a seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand, I believe, under one sixteen J. That is simply, uh, a reporting requirement to the state. It does not impose, uh, an obligation to have a business subsidy agreement.
But when the subsidy agreement came to this council here this year, it does have a significantly different process that we must follow in order to actually vote on a sale. In this purchase agreement, we're saying most certainly it is not a subsidy. I think when you look at the math without any bids and all the liabilities only being included, not adding in the actual value of the furniture and equipment, not adding in the value of the actual operating business, I actually don't believe we can make that statement. We have not followed financial, uh, policies written by this city as it relates to a subsidy. So you're comfortable as our attorney putting that in there, not having verified all of that different information?
Councilmember Meyer, this is the council's agreement. You took proposals. You've got the highest proposal that you've proceeded with. You've directed us to prepare a purchase agreement. Presumably that's fair market value. We had a good discussion in the closed session. I've tried to embody that in the agreement here. That's the council's determination about whether or not you believe that's a subsidy. And if you feel this is incorrect, if the council feels this is incorrect, then we need to change it. But I, I'm taking my lead from the council.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. I just.
Disagreement on that, but I, I, I'm trying to embody what the council's directed us to do.
And I, and I appreciate, I, I think when you lay out the numbers, when you don't have the bids, when you haven't evaluated the business, we actually haven't done the due diligence. We have until January. I actually believe not only is this, um, we can't say that it's not a subsidy, probably more than likely is, which requires a completely different process. But what I would also then bring up, since you brought it up on the open process, so on slide.
And councilmember Meyer, I'll, I'll have you finish that thought.
Yep.
And then I'll let the other councilmembers weigh in too.
Okay. So I'll go to, I think this is the slide where it says September nineteenth on the top. So this says September nineteenth, "The concept of purchase of the golf course was brought to council." I was told that the original proposal was brought last spring to a workshop. Can staff answer that for me?
I, I can't speak to that.
Rob, were you at that workshop?
Can you repeat that again?
Uh, it was told to me when I first came on board, because this was midstream when I came here, that a proposal was originally brought to a workshop in the spring, uh, was not accepted at that workshop, and it was then discussed to go to RFP after that. So is that September nineteenth date accurate?
Yeah, that sounds accurate. Yep. And Anna prepared this PowerPoint, and, um, I'm sure she prepared it to the best of her knowledge, so.
So it is accurate that it was September nineteenth or that it was brought forward in the spring?
That it was brought forward in this, well, I can't speak to any certainty outside of what's on this PowerPoint, so.
So my, my question is really on the open market. That, that's what you said. The appraisal talks about average open market time for a property like this of six to twelve months. And the appraiser's initial notes within that, um, say that it's actually more like twelve to eighteen months. Uh, we had four approvals come, or four people come forward, uh, for proposals before I was here. It was my first night on council. The four people who showed up are the current proposal that we had. Also the one that was brought forward potentially last spring. So that person had a lot of time to actually prepare a proposal. The other three, uh, were, one was inconsistent, the other one didn't show up, and the third one said, "We simply do not have time in a sixty-day process to evaluate a complex property like that with all the conditions we put on an RFP." So I think looking at the appraisal, uh, and that information, that we have not tested the open market, um, on this property sufficiently. And so, um, I, I, I have a problem with that process that we've, we've taken. And then my last question, Rob, will be.
And we'll hold you there. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
Councilmembers, any other discussion to be brought forward? Or questions? Alex?
Yeah, um, as Jed stated, there's assumptions that are being made, in my opinion, on the high side and the low side throughout this. What it comes down to, for me personally, is that this golf course, um, right now, and it's going to continue to go up in the coming years, is a liability for this, uh, the city. And we have the opportunity for, um, a party to take control, um, to fix issues that are with it and to make it better, along one of our main drags in the city. We have the thirty-year deed, which is what we always, from the start, wanted to make sure we had with it. Just because we take this and put it to a private party doesn't mean we don't support the parks in our city. We don't sell this. We don't, we have eighty parks and we can't afford to keep them up. Um, it does us no good. So in my opinion, um, the party purging this has come forward, has given us everything that we've asked. has given us everything that we've asked for. And I, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to back someone that can make some great improvements within our city.
Council, a couple, I guess, comments that I'd offer right now and a couple of questions as well is, I'll say that I'm floored at our lack of desire to hear from people in the audience tonight. I think in, in current society, government needs to be more open than closed. And we have a full room tonight that we don't normally get. And everyone's invited back second and fourth Monday. But in reality, we have our community that first saw anything about the details on Thursday afternoon. We know that dating back to last Friday, the distribution list for citycouncil@sertelmn.com hasn't worked. We were first notified when our attorney tried to send us the purchase agreement, and it failed or bounced back to him. We've gotten emails today from residents who have also tried to email council, and it's gotten bounced back. And then on top of that, we doubled down to say, "Thanks for showing up, but we're not, we're not going to have you speak tonight." I think there's a couple of interesting items that, of note. And last week, the, the current operator called me and, and I'll say a bit distraught. And I asked him to collect his thoughts and, and share via email. Unfortunately, I don't see that email has come through. Again, it might be related to email problems that we're having. But he was distraught specifically about a comment that was made from our staff in a newsletter and, and asked that we retract that newsletter stating that the current operators have asked for the closing, excuse me, the cancellation of the lease to happen. And they've expressed to me in no mixed words that they absolutely hadn't requested that, that that was essentially pushed to them, that they need to cancel the lease in order to play, and that when the potential new owner takes over, then they'd be in a position to generate a new lease to operate that golf course. Now, dating all the way back to our closed session, which was March thirteenth, one of the main items that council had directed was the cancellation needs to sequence one day post the closing. And you mentioned tonight that, yes, that was both for a financial reason. But more importantly, the sentiment was if we cancel the current operator lease agreement and then we don't close on the property, we're not only out the clo, the fifty thousand dollars, we're now out an operator. And we don't have the staff to operate that on moment's notice. And so my first question on that, Adam, would be, it was a three to two council vote to move forward in that closed session. Myself and councilmember Meyer dissenting on that. There was clarity to say, "We're presenting an offer. We're asking you to present a final offer back to the potential buyer." Where did deviation come from March thirteenth to this past week, when we see a final purchase agreement, where we're now deviating the closing and the cancellation of the lease? How did we get there?
Mr. Mayor, a couple, a couple of reasons we got there. So one, I think staff took the charge that we were to bring a deal that generally fit into your parameters. And two, the, the question about the termination of lease. So that termination of the lease is on November fifteenth, which in talking with the operator is essentially the close of golf season. So that the city wouldn't be left in the lurch by trying to terminate the lease on, in the middle of the golf season. But also, it's a timeframe that gives the greatest possible opportunity for both the buyer to procure an operator for the twenty twenty-four season as well as address the contingency if something does go wrong with the closing, that the cities got that opportunity to, to have as much time as possible to make plans for the twenty twenty-four season without interrupting the twenty twenty-three season.
But again, in, in closed session, the very clear discussion we had or direction that was offered from council was that we wanted to sequence that and be very intentional about sequencing that. And so was there additional council feedback outside of that? Or I personally hadn't heard anything until last week when I, I received the final purchase agreement. And then I'm reading through that going, whoa, this, to me, was very different than what the three-two council consensus and direction was on March thirteenth.
I think part of that stems from talking about a different closing date. And so if we were closing in, in May, that might have made some sense. But moving a closing to January seemed like termination of the lease in November made the most sense. So it was an audible call, I guess.
Okay. Was there council direction on that, or was that audible purely from staff?
I did not talk to any council members.
Okay. Uh, council, other thoughts?
Rob, could you walk us through the actual original purchase price? What the, what we bought it for? Could you walk us through all the numbers so that everybody's clear? Because I see all these numbers continue to get thrown around. Could you also add in the revenue that's been generated from this property? Because we keep talking about it as a liability, which I think is absolutely incorrect. We have land value, something that's produced revenue since the time we purchased it. We have some potential expenditures. Now, we've, we, we continue to gain revenue on this thing. We've distributed that to other parks and other places, but that, that doesn't mean it's not an actual asset as we continue, continue to move forward. Could you walk us through all the financials, please?
Yeah, so in two thousand and eight, we purchased the eighteen hole golf course, which includes the nine holes that we have now, and then also Pinecone Central Park for three million four hundred twenty-five thousand, which included a hundred and five thousand of personal property. So three million three hundred twenty thousand for the eighteen hole course from Z and L Corporation in two thousand and eight. To finance that, there was one point one million in local costs, which came from our cash reserve out of our sales tax fund, and then two point three, four, or five million from bond proceeds. And we paid those bond proceeds back, the principal and interest back through our sales tax fund over the course of five years. To date, we have received just over three hundred fifty thousand in lease revenue from two thousand and nine to twenty twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-three, we'll receive just under thirty-two thousand. And from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and thirty-two, in our current lease agreements, net present value was a seven percent discount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand. I will note, though, when we did buy the property back in two thousand and eight, the three million four hundred twenty-five thousand was for the eighteen hole course, which half of it is now Pinecone Central Park. So we would still retain half of what we purchased back in two thousand and eight.
Meaning we've got it on the, on our books for one point six million as a, as an asset on our books today?
Correct, yep.
Council, other discussion or questions? Jill?
Do you have questions?
No.
I, I don't have questions. I actually would make a motion to approve so we can move to further discussion.
We have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, as stated, discussion.
For me, i- it's pretty simple. We purchased this for three point five million, value at one point five to one point six of what it actually cost us originally. It's an income generating asset. It is the cheapest green and park space we will ever have. I think our current purchase agreement in trying to keep it a golf course for thirty years is great. But I also think that, you know, ten years from now, should golf, which is a flight or fight, flight type sport, bust or boom, potentially could go under. And I, I don't know that a future city council is going to make a business operator operate it at a loss. I worry about that contingency being removed. So I would love comment on that at some point to see if we could do that. But the appraisal's eight hundred and forty thousand. And in this presentation that we devalue our own appraisal. This appraiser has been in business since nineteen sixty-eight, and they do fifteen hundred appraisals a year. And I don't know that we're qualified to actually devalue them saying there's an adequate parking lot and some of the things that were actually said in there. I also have a problem that we have not evaluated the asset side of this from the furniture and equipment and especially the operating business in any fashion or form. I think if you were to do all those math, we should not be saying that this is not a subsidy. I, I don't believe we should be putting that in a written document. I don't believe we've met that burden of proof and actually probably would show that it actually is probably a subsidy, maybe one of the biggest ones we've ever given as the city of Sartell. And therefore, a different process for this application should be done under our own city policies as we move forward, if we were to move forward with this. You know, and, and I'll just say, I'd, I'd support this business owner buying this. This is not on the buyer. None of the things I'm saying tonight are on the buyer. I'm all about economic development, supporting our local businesses, somebody who gives back to this community. I have a very positive opinion of the person trying to buy this. I just really have a problem with the due diligence we've done. I don't think we've tested the open market. I don't believe we've done all the work. We, we don't have to close until January. There's plenty of other, of other time for us to table this and actually get public comment and, and ultimately do all of the actual math and work that needs to be done here for us to make some of the claims that we're making. Because the purchase price at four twenty-six does not meet the four fifty. We did not submit a counter offer, it sounds like, which was the direction that I recall from that closed met, um, session, which so staff did not follow that direction either. Four twenty-six is an absolutely unacceptable price to me. It does not require our, or it does not resound financial and fiscal responsibility on behalf of our taxpayers' dollars. The future value of this land on behalf of these taxpayers is significantly higher than that. If it was not already appraised at a conditional use, this current appraisal would be much higher as well. I think we say we can't develop it as residential, but we also know that it floods. We also know that we're working on the flooding in the wilds and other places. And if that gets approved, this land value continues to skyrocket and go up. I will not be in support of this tonight. I think it's disheartening that we didn't ask and listen to our community. But from a price standpoint and a subsidy not being able to prove that it's not a subsidy and follow our own process, we should not be even voting on this tonight until we can prove that it is an actual, actually not a subsidy and following our internal process.
I would like to just make one other comment in regards to following our process. There's nothing I value more than our citizens' opinion. And me saying no to that tonight doesn't mean that I don't value any of your voices. In my time on council, we haven't opened those up for public hearing. So my only ask would be if we're going to do it in the future, it's brought forward before six P M. so that we're aware of that. Like I said, I, I think it'd be great to have more input on it. But bringing it at that time, I think it, this was detrimental to the process.
So Alex, on that note, I, I would think that we could table this and actually have a public hearing on it moving forward so that people have the chance to speak. That would be a very responsible thing to do. We don't have to close till January. I'm not sure why we wouldn't do that.
I think as council, we've taken our steps. They've had the opportunity to comment on it through different methods. I spoke to citizens today. I got emails from citizens today. We've had this posted about potential buyers for six months now.
None of this is done on camera, in public, at a council meeting. It's been at a workshop where our agendas don't actually list specifically what we're going to talk about in depth to tell people to come here and talk. They've come here tonight to talk. We told them no. Every email, we all received a bunch of emails. I had fifteen of them today. Not one of them supported it as we wanted to move forward. And I would like to hear from them as to, do they have the same thoughts that I've shared this evening about how poor of a financial decision this will be for our taxpayers as we continue to move forward? Again, I want to reiterate, I have, this has nothing to do with the buyer. If, if our sales price is on this council, and if we're going to let this thing go for this cheap at that big of a bargain and subsidy, that's on us, not on the buyer. Good for the buyer. Like, I have nothing but support for the buyer. But we should not be taking this big of a discount on public parkland that would be the cheapest parkland we will ever use. And when we talk about liabilities, we're talking about a golf course. The restrictions here are that it remains a park. I know the golfers won't love this. But if we get to a spot in the future where we can't afford to fix stuff, it can be a cross-country ski trail in the summer. We don't, or in the winter, we don't actually have to keep it a golf course per, per the park restrictions that I read. We can do a lot of things with this. This was originally purchased from the spirit in two thousand and eight that this was going to be for future generations of these, of our residents to actually enjoy this parkland forevermore in the city and the heart of our city. For us to let that go is an absolute travesty, in my opinion.
I'd add a couple on to that. And I'll get a hold of that, please. Adding on to that, some of the discussion that we've had and some of the options that, that council deliberated on was, we like the concepts that have been presented, right? We've got renderings here tonight that have been shared with us. Beautiful options. It, it would, it would do wonders on that site. It would bring a, a great new restaurant to the community. It would modernize the clubhouse. But in the, in the presentation, there was nothing about the golf course itself. It was all about the corner, which I think is very attractive. But as, as our finance policy, and specifically under, under subsidy, calls out that in order for the subsidy to be offered, that we require the purchaser to demonstrate an ability to operate the course or operate the property. And so again, to previous points that have been made, we're not following that. We don't today have that. Frankly, we're canceling the lease before we actually sell the property to the company that knows how to operate the course, and they've done so successfully. When the city purchased the property, I've, I've gotten a history lesson the last two weeks here on the property. And when the city purchased it, the current operators were engaged and, and took that over. And for the first eight years, operated in, in the red. They lost a lot of money. They had to reconstruct four holes and a lot of irrigation because we cut the course in half. Right? They've now been able to turn a profit on the business, but to date have not broken even on the losses that they've incurred over the years while operating the golf course. And so for us as a, as a city entity to now turn back and say, hey, we're pulling that, we're canceling the lease, whether we pay the lease cancellation or not, doesn't feel right. I've been assured by the two operators plus their finance manager that the city of Sartell, to date, within the last three years, has not asked one time for their income statements or any financial documents. And to hear that we're saying, hey, they declined to offer it to us, is scary, that we have that disconnect. Now, again, I wish they would have been able to offer that testimony directly from themselves. But in the absence of that, I'll offer that tonight. That's, there's, there's items about this that just aren't adding up for me on top of the purchase price. One of the items council considered and deliberated on was breaking off the front three acres of the property. That achieves a new restaurant. That achieves a dressed up corner and is really desired by many. We then would have an option to lease back the other remaining seventy-eight acres in the heart of our community for one dollar. And should golf fail at some point in time, the city of Sartell still has seventy-eight acres in the heart of Sartell. Maybe we want to make more soccer fields. Maybe we want more baseball. Irregardless, we still retain all of that. What is presented to us tonight is a holistic eighty-one acre deal. And at some point in time, if there's a failure to adhere to the, to the terms within thirty years, we're going to force a future city council and staff to go back to a local business person that everyone here respects and take that property back from them. Now, that feels like we're setting future council up for failure. And I just can't wrap my head around why we'd be. And I just can't wrap my head around why we'd be going down this path, not willing to, to hear facts from parties that are, that are part of the situation. On top of that, Rob, you shared the original purchase price was three million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In order to do so, in order to acquire that, we went to the voters and asked for a half cent sales tax, right? I can't imagine a single voter that voted in favor of that would be voting in favor of selling that property now. On top of that, there's likely a renewal of that half-cent sales tax back to the voter in near future. Do we think as a council that they're going to get behind and say, yes, we'll support a half-cent sales tax for future parks in the city of Sartell? If we turn around and sell this at the largest discount that Sartell's ever sold a property for? I heard it celebrated at the planning commission that this is the largest dollar amount that the city's ever received for a piece of property. We've never sold eighty-two acres. So it damn well better be the largest purchase price, not at a per-acre rate, but an overall rate. So council, I would urge us to hit pause and have a very intentional pause to Councilmember Lewandowski's point of, there's a lot of people that want to share their feedback. I'm not certain they've all been able to access us. Let's hear from them. I've gotten fifteen emails. I'm staring at two former mayors who I don't know had anything that they aligned on sitting next to each other tonight, sitting next to in the same role, two former council members. All four of them have emailed all of us tonight or today stating their complete displeasure with us even contemplating what's in front of us tonight. I have high confidence I can say that any, anyone that's served on city council in the last fifteen years would not support what's in front of us tonight. And yet, we as a council are continuing to, to look at moving this project forward, hearing everything we've heard, a lack of support on it from our council. Council, I'll digress, but if we move forward on this tonight, I think this is going to live on and we're going to carry this, this burden for many, many years to come, both as individual council members and as a city as a whole within our community.
Ryan, you mentioned some dollar amounts. Pinecone Central Park frontage is going for anywhere between three, two to four dollars a square foot. We have like five acres there. This four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars represents three point two four acres that we're selling at the price of four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars if we were to use current sales prices on Pinecone Road. The offer that you talked about when we said, let's, that this is a fair price for the front three point two acres, we can accomplish everything. I am not looking at eighty-one acres at four twenty-four as twelve cents a square foot. It is nowhere near market value, nowhere near. And I just don't understand why we would let it go at that price when there was another viable option at a fair price of four twenty-six for that three point two acres on Pinecone, which is absolutely a viable option as well, that we wouldn't have even considered to counter offer that forward.
Look, certainly appreciate those who are here tonight and your opinions. This has been a really long process for us. We've been working on this for nine months. There's been social media posts. Obviously, we went out with the RFP. There's opportunities to get involved at any point along the way. So tonight, I felt it was important to follow decorum for that reason, that we've had nine months of opportunity to get involved. As we've talked about tonight, the city does not have funds to support the current operations at the course, including the irrigation system that needs to be replaced, a building that does not meet code, a parking lot that needs replacement. Since inception, as we've talked about, all proceeds from the golf course have passed through the city to fund other projects. There's never been any financial planning done to ensure the golf course could be operated into the future. This council made a very concerted decision early on that we wanted to maintain the land as a golf course, hence the restrictions that have been put into the agreement with the proposed buyer. This golf, excuse me, previous council paid for the property as, as we've talked about, but at the time failed to protect the property as a park. We've talked tonight about the fact that parks are an integral part of the city and if it was that important, it should have been planted as a park at that time. We were stuck with a lease that quite honestly provided us limited or no ability to manage maintenance and repairs on the course in conjunction and working with that, with the operator. Despite all these things, the golf course has become an amenity for golfers and its accessibility to our trail system is key. It's time to sell the golf course to the RFP respondent who has proved to us as a city, who is the only person that met all the requirements of the RFP. This person has agreed to all the restrictions that I think actually Councilmember Meyer and, and the mayor proposed or were adamant about including in the agreements. The golf course needs a lot of investments and it's, quite simply, it's outside the scope of the city to take that on right now.
I would just respond that it did not meet the requirements from my perspective. So that's not an accurate statement, especially on price. I think I was pretty adamant on that as well as for us to have the closing and the lease termination be simultaneous and a counter offer put on price was actually what we talked about. So that, that was not met whatsoever through this process.
Sorry, I was responding to the, addressing the restrictions that it remain a golf course for thirty years as well as the golf course standards restrictions that have been put in the document.
One thing on the USGA turf standards that are in the agreement, as I read them today, it talks about fairways, tee boxes, putting greens, right? It spells out each, each part of a golf course. What I struggle with, and again, was, was offered assurance that it would be maintained at or better than what we do today. But as I look at, at the bullets on those, under each one of them, it says discretionary and it says subject to budget capabilities. And so to me, it, it seems more like a guiding document to say, if you have the budgetary capabilities to maintain a golf course to this standard, you would do so, right? But should there not be budgetary ability to do so, we don't have any ability, as I read it in that document, to hold them to USGA turf standards. Is, am I accurate in interpreting it that way?
I don't, I don't think so. So, you know, for example, it says properly fill divots as often as the budget allows. And so if there's no repair of divots, I think you've got the recourse. Yes, there's going to be some subjectivity about what that means, but there's an obligation to maintain the golf course here. These PGA standards, as we talked about previously, are the best that we could come up with. We don't have any golf course maintenance experts on staff, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, we played that up, I think, I personally feel like we've played that up as, hey, we're going to be offered assurance that it's going to be held at a very high standard from performance of turf. And as I read through that, it's, boy, you could make an argument why you can't do that, you can't do this, you can't do that. And, and the agreement, I don't know that really holds weight. And so I, again, it's, it's forcing us into a spot where we then, if, if we can determine they're not filling divots or that the irrigation isn't fixed, we're taking back, going to take back eighty-one acres with a new restaurant on it. And, and to me, that seems challenging. Rob, on the entire slide of drivers in this decision not selling results in city liabilities, everyone there is the city taking it over, why we can't take it over, why we can't fund it, we haven't been saving for it. Was there staff discussion on just continuing on with the lease that's in place today and pressing to the current operators that they need to bring the, the building into code compliance?
Those discussions sort of occurred between Anna and the current operator. I was not involved in those discussions. John, Gary?
No, I was not involved in them discussions. I don't know if that discussion ever happened.
So to me, we're talking about, this is a huge liability that if we don't sell it, we're going to have to raise taxes, which is scary for all of us. We're going to have to create a fund to pay for it. Yet the course is leased through two thousand and twenty-three. They've been paying their lease payments. It, it honestly, to me, seems like there's very limited responsibility, financial responsibility on the city. I think we need to push back on the operator to say, you have to bring your building up to code, which would be expected within the lease anyways. And so rather than just ditching it and trying to scare ourselves that, holy crap, we haven't been saving like maybe we should have, we're now saying we have to have a fire sale to get rid of this so that it can turn into something different.
This, this is not a fire sale. We've been working on this for nine months and I just want to be careful about using that word. We, we went very deliberately out to the public and asked for RFPs for this over a two-month period. I think using the term fire sale is, is not appropriate in this context.
I would disagree. I think it is a fire sale, was not done through an open process. And I also think that you've listed out, so we keep hearing this thing, we're going to raise taxes because of all these liabilities, right? On this sheet that you presented this evening, there is two hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in additional improvements. If anybody in this city believes that a multi-million dollar process, piece of land on ten-year schedule is probably what it's worth, probably worth one point five at least if we didn't have the restriction of the golf course today, that we would sell an asset like that based on that little amount of investment. Not to mention, we actually don't have to make the investment because we could keep it as a different form of a park. Not to mention, we could refuse the lease on our own, pay the sixty thousand dollars and actually operate the golf course, which we've learned that it's profitable. There's, there's things in here that says, well, we might have to get a loan in the future to pay for staff. What kind of net operating business? The staff already comes with the operating business, guys. It's profit, profitable. Matter of fact, we just created a parks department. They have staff. We actually might actually be able to build our parks department staff faster by removing the lease, running the golf course with the staff that's already there. These are not liabilities. This, this, to me, first of all, even if they were, they're not at the dollar amount where it would cause us to want to do a fire sale at four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars on a property that's worth a million bucks if you add the operating business onto top of this. It makes zero sense and this scaring that we're going to have to raise taxes or have to take out loans in the future for some of this stuff holds no credibility whatsoever.
I'd, I'd like to just correct a few things. Jed, you've mentioned a number of times that we have not had an open process. We have, it's been advertised on social media. We invited whoever wanted to make an offer on, to the course to make an offer. It was open, it was there. We received, yes, we didn't receive as many as we might have liked, but the market bears what the market bears. If there's four buyers for your golf course, there's four buyers. If there's two, there's two. But that value was left up to the individual group to process a price point that met our standard. We went back on the price a few times, negotiated, asked for more, that was appeased. We have, the, the part about a city running a golf course and a restaurant and, and entertainment center is not what we do best. We are a city that should be running city business and to operate a golf course and to waste the resources that we need for other park amenities and our public works, it just seems like a, a real struggle to keep that moving forward in a positive light. If we were to have some sort of major mechanical issue at the course, where would we fund that firm at this point? Where do we get the money for a new, new irrigation system? How do we maintain the standards that we're setting up here for the buyer and LP, or the PGA standard golf? But we don't even come close to that right now for our course. It's a nine-hole course. It's a munichor, municipal course. It is a fun recreational course and an asset to this, the city. But I don't believe as a city, we should be running this. It's not our process. Our process is to oversee a city and a government and move forward. Yes, we have assets and parks and whatever, but this is just a liability waiting for us to struggle into something where we have to figure out, how do we pay for a new irrigation system? How do we deal with the flood being there for the last, you know, month? There's a lot of liabilities there and I, I think the, you've said many times that the land is valuable, we need to maintain it. I, I think this is more of a liability and it's maintaining it by someone else in a private, the private commu, or business community, maintaining it, but we still get the benefit of having a golf course. We still get the benefit of all the assets that that person brings into the city and we move forward in a partnership with them. Yes, it's a golf course for the next thirty years. Yes, we're going to put super high expectations on a nine-hole municipal golf course. We're not talking about country club level standards. It's always been a fun, family-owned course to come out and play. It's either daytime or with kids after school, whatever. It's a great course and I don't want to lose that. That's why we went through all the process we went through to set the standard of where we wanted to be as a city. We wanted to have a golf course. We wanted it to be family-friendly. We wanted a new, a new amenities there. That opportunity has presented itself through the market value of advertising and asking people to come and operate. And unfortunately, you know, as, as we move forward in this process, we are not in a, a position as a city to, to take on this liability right now. It's just, there's too much risk.
Tim, do you agree that there, that would be an option to continue to not take, to your point, we can't take it on right now, we haven't been saving for it, right? But to continue through the lease process that's in place? I, I know to date or, or year-to-date here, and they just opened, they've already put nine thousand dollars into repairing some of their pumps out there, they shared that with me. They're maintaining it and it's not a liability today. So I guess the, the question is, do you still view that as a liability if we just maintain the current lease on it?
If I go with what I've been told and, and we've all discussed it openly and the buyer's aware of the condition of the course and what we have to deal with, with potential, with the building, with the liability of the, of the irrigation system, yeah, there is, there is some risk going forward. We have to redo a parking lot, all that above. Do we have the capacity within the city if something went wrong with it tomorrow without going into some funds to cover it?
Under our current lease, they cover that. And, and so.
That lease is up to interpretation by a lot of people that it's a very weak lease and, and, and hopefully we never have to find that out because that, that could be expensive for us.
Well, I think we have found it out. They've run it for fifteen years without having coming at us. So they've proven that they've been a great partner through this process and executing, even if it is a weak lease. We have fifteen years of them not coming and asking us for that, of putting their own money into it. It's a revenue generator for them. And, and again, I'll, I'll make the coin, the point that if, the, the golfers might not be happy with this statement, but there's no reason we have to keep it as a golf course if we had to. The, the land value in the center of Sartell is a park at eighty-one acres, is the cheapest we will ever own that property in the history of Sartell moving forward. And they're not making more land, you heard that earlier tonight. So there are plenty of options. There are plenty of options. That irrigation, we were told, has been said that needs to be fixed for the last five years, but it's still running just fine. Maybe it lasts another five years. Maybe the seal coat, because the appraisal says it's adequate, maybe it's an actual patch job and a seal coat and we get another five years out of it. That's about twenty-five thousand dollars, not a hundred thousand dollars. We have plenty of options and so many questions because we haven't gotten bids, we haven't evaluated any of this information with real numbers to really understand what are we actually staring at here. We could ultimately, yes, we could ultimately use other funds for a period of time because these golf course leases are, are there for the next ten years, right? So that we, we have that lease committed somewhere else. Doesn't mean that we can't then operate it and pay ourselves back. We ran a Pinecone Central Park Association, which I was a part of, and ran that park over there for multiple, multiple years, running a great opportunity, great city amenity with a volunteer board where we took all the profits and we put it back into that facility and made it one of the best baseball facilities in the entire state of Minnesota. We are now destination baseball. We all just had that presentation from Sartell Baseball Association. We could definitely look at a similar model right here on this golf course to do the exact same thing. There's no reason we would not consider that. There's no reason we would, uh, not consider that as well.
Mr. Rippe, um, I, I think one of the things that I heard from other council members was the excitement of a new restaurant coming in and what that would mean for Sartell. Yet, the renderings are of an existing one that might move over. Do we have assurance that there truly is a net new restaurant that'd be added or?
No, you have not asked for that. That's not in the agreement.
Okay. Council, I, I again would ask us that we, we consider taking a pause on this. The, the key staff member who has been lead on all the negotiations that we're hearing tonight, that there's a number of discrepancies on what's, what's been shared and what hasn't been shared and what's been asked for specific to the financials, which really helps us value the true business. Based on those discrepancies, I, I would strongly urge us to take a pause. Let's flush that out. When, when that staff member returns, um, we can take this on the next meeting. I, I, I just don't, this isn't closing until January. I don't understand the, the urgency to rush this through right now. This is 81 acres in the heart of our community. And again, I'll go back to, um, for the last 15 years, a number of council members that have served our community, that have understood the, the challenges facing a city from parks to financials, everything. They've devoted a lot of their time to doing what we're doing here tonight. And not a single one of them is in support of us moving forward with this. To me, that speaks volumes. We're not talking about a, a resident who hasn't served in this capacity or doesn't understand the, the, the challenges, uh, that we face in, in maintaining our parks. So just the weight of that in and of itself tells me, hey, we should hit a pause and ensure that we flush out all questions before we, we move forward on this, knowing that time is not of the essence right now. Council, any other closing remarks before I call for a vote?
I would just say I would also concur that there's no reason not to take a pause. There's no reason for us not to open this up to public comment at a future meeting. And there's no reason for us not to validate the actual asset side of furnitures, fixtures and equipment and the operating business, along with all of the liabilities that have been described here through actual construction bids by two different bid, bidders, for us to really understand, are we following our subsidy process? I don't believe we've met the $450,000 requirement from the closed session. I don't believe you give last year's profits to a future buyer. Uh, I, I don't, I actually believe we had said 475 as well, which obviously we don't know because we don't have a transcript. But the reality is, we haven't met the obligations of submitting a counteroffer at a price that this council asked them to submit it for. We have not verified whether this is not a subsidy. We're putting it in a purchase agreement, a legal agreement, saying it's not a subsidy, which I think is inaccurate and should not be voted on this evening.
Any other closing remarks from council?
I think you, you both have raised a, a very strong argument against, uh, moving forward on this at this moment. I mean, there's questions that I could see that have come to the surface. It's been such a long drawn-out process. It seems like we've been talking this since last summer. And, and we're very close. We have an excellent purchase opportunity for it. I, I just like to kind of figure out where we're at on the council and, and how we feel about further discussion or do we move ahead at this point? I guess that's what you're asking, Ryan, is that?
That's correct. Yeah. We do have a motion and a second out there, um, that we need to act on or amend first procedurally. The motion is second that's before us right now is the, uh, acceptance as stated. I, I would, I'd love to see us, uh, take a, uh, amend that to, to have further discussion, to flush out, uh, fact from fiction. This is a massive, quite literally might be the largest decision, sitting in front of me tonight that I've made, um, or will be asked to make in, in, I think, seven years now of serving in, on the city council. It has been long drawn out. I would agree. But with all due respect to that, a lot of that has been either in a workshop setting, which had not been identified what the actual topic was, or it was in closed session, uh, under state statute allowing us to close that meeting for negotiation purposes. Many of the golfers that, that golf at the course have asked me where are things at? And all we could offer were, there's a negotiation taking place between our staff and attorney and a potential buyer that came forward. In the absence of being able to say anything more, I, I don't understand why pausing for one council meeting, coming back on, uh, on the 22nd after we flushed out all those questions, why that can't be moved forward at that point with a January closing as, as currently scheduled? Is there a, um, would there be a desire to amend the motion to table until the 22nd?
No, I, I don't want to amend my motion.
We do have a motion and a second in front of us. We do need to act on that as it won't be amended. And following the outcome of that, um, we could take additional steps. So, uh, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of, um, the purchase agreement as it states today, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything? Sorry. Clarification?
Opposed.
Okay. Um, that fails with, uh, two to three?
I'd like to make a motion to table the current bid and discuss it and move forward to the next meeting.
There's a motion to table the current purchase agreement as presented with further, further action taken on the next meeting, which will be, uh, May 22nd. Is there a second?
I would second.
There's a motion and a second on that. Discussion on that motion.
The only, um, comments I'd like to make is in our previous meeting, to be transparent, there were some of us that were, we weren't close in price. I guess just still approach in that meeting that, um, there are some things that can be clarified. However, uh, if we're expecting, um, a price at, um, 25, 50% higher, just that we understand that, uh, we wouldn't have the same buyer, which I know some people are okay with. I guess that's why I made those comments.
I think that, uh, my comment would be the fact that I am very comfortable with the purchase of agreement that we have in place. I just wanna clarify, so there is transparency to the public, um, that we have done our due diligence. I'm very upset with the fact that there's some el- you know, comments that we are not doing this in an open format. I am moving this forward in this tabled motion so that we can confirm that we have done it with the best intention of Sartell and the most transparency. If people don't actually believe that, then w- we lose trust within the, the government of Sartell. And at this point, I'm, I would have voted actually right for the, the agreement and I was on, had all intention to do that until there was some council discussion about transparency and closed-door sessions. It's total BS. We've had conversations on multiple, multiple meetings and it, it upsets me that you can throw that out there without having been part of that process. And it, it just infuriates me. But at this point, I will move for this motion and we will go through tr- transparency and then we will move and, and I guarantee you that we'll bring it next forward at the current position so everybody can see it and we'll vote on it soon.
I would hope that then in the full transparency of that, that we would actually ask for public comment at, uh, at the next meeting on behalf of this, uh, that we didn't give the public the chance to actually speak on this evening.
Can we put some definition to what we're working to clarify in this motion? I don't, I, I, I am confused as to what we're-
As it states today is, uh, tabling for consideration on the, um, next council as, I guess that's how the motion was made. Anything additional you wanna clarify?
How do you wanna pay, phrase that?
Well, I, I, there was a lot of things thrown out, um, like we need clarification, but I, if we're tabling this to provide further clarification, I wanna be specific about what that is without just kicking this down the road.
Yeah. Um, I, I'd, for clarification sake, I'd ask if we can, uh, within the motion, designate that there will be public comment available, um, so that it is transparent, so that if, if there are, uh, issues out there, we're able to bring those forward and talk through them in a public setting versus having, uh, accurate or inaccurate commentary out there. I think we need to flush all of that out in a public setting, um, to make sure we're all informed on, on what vote we're gonna make.
And some of the things that I had brought forward earlier of actually getting bids on some of these liabilities, asking the golf course for, uh, their actual P&Ls that we actually understand the asset side of this balance sheet. So we understand as a city, did we follow the proper process to understand whether this is a subsidy or not? And if it is, we can still approve it, but there's an entirely different process per our own policy that we would have needed to follow, that we have yet to follow.
In respect to Council Mayor Meyer's, um, statements there, I don't feel like that would be achieved within two weeks, that make a decision at that point anyways.
Right. I mean-
And if that's where we wanna go, that's what we wanna do, but I don't believe that'd be achieved within two weeks.
And so I, staff would have to weigh in on that.
Sure. So just my comments. You're asking for, um, FFNE. We want an updated P&L from, um, the current operators, which would result in an updated appraisal, I'm assuming. And you would also, uh, I'm missing one here, but, um, just thinking of those two items. I'll have to talk to the appraiser because I'm assuming you'd want an updated appraisal based on furniture's fit-
There's industry standards that, you know, all appraisers that evaluate businesses use. It shouldn't be very hard to grab the revenue and the net earnings and try to come up with an approximate value of the operating business.
Sure.
Uh, once you have the P&Ls, it would take you about a half an hour to figure that out.
So we're not asking for a reappraisal?
No, not, not in a reappraisal. I think we actually already have a good appraisal. I'm actually talking about an actual evaluation of the operating business so we understand the value that's coming along with on top of the appraisal. Because if you add that dollar amount and then you subtract the op- the liabilities, we may be at a subsidy, which means we have to follow a different process.
Okay. Those two items and for, further clarification on subsidy and whether this meets the criteria of a subsidy, um, is what I'm hearing. So I, I think that's very reasonable within two weeks.
And formal bids for construction?
Well, we can get, we compared the parking lot to parking lot we did here two years ago.
It wouldn't be formal bids, but we likely in two weeks could get some proposals from at least two contractors.
And to, to do the extent of the building, just depends what you're gonna do. You know, I mean, it's kinda wide open. I-
My assumption is we would be just looking at to what would get it up to code. I think that was the primary purpose for that.
Just so that we're understanding, again, the, the slide on the screen here, right, paints this picture that we either have to sell it or we have to raise taxes to keep it. And, and I, I don't think that's an accurate picture that's being painted to us as council.
I think it's clear, definitely clear, that we do not have the funds to operate this at the standard that we're holding the purchaser at. We couldn't even do it ourselves. If we were have to go out and get new irrigation and get new restaurant and get all those features that we've added on to this PA, which is completely ridiculous at sometimes, that they hold that a standard where we're trying to build something out of something we don't have. And it, it's infuriating to say that, uh, we can hold these person but ourselves for years have always been okay with it as it is. So if that's the case, I, I still will, will further those discussions and, and ask for those, that additional information. But at this point, I think with the clear, we have clear public comments back to us and I, I would look for discussion on, uh, opening it up, but I, I don't, at this point, I'm not gonna amend it for open session. I think letters and emails and text messages are just great. It's just, it draws out the process. But I just wanna be clear and transparent to make sure that the numbers that are you looking for are going to be present from Rob and Anna and, and, and engineering and, and, and the maintenance. But, um, I will make a motion next, at the next meeting after hearing that and, and I know, you know, what my, where my heart is, so.
And I, and I understand and I appreciate the financial and, and going through all that work. I just, again, I'll reiterate, we have two former mayors, multiple council members who have, um, spoken or been here this evening, who have a way more history than all of us combined, uh, on this council, that would wanna have a chance to speak as long, along with a lot of other people in this room. And so I would hope that we would be open to hearing the public's comment on this.
All right, council. The motion in front of us is to, uh, table it for one, one meeting and, uh, revisit it at that point. Documented the items that are being sought. Is there any questions on the motion?
I just wanna circle back with Tim. You, your motion is to include public comment or not include public comment?
I think that the written and emailed public comment is, is clear. There, there's nothing they're gonna say that isn't written in all these letters passionately. I, we, I can feel it in every text message, every me- all day long. Um, I encourage you to continue to send what, if you have additional information. But I, I know what the concern is. Uh, we, it's clear in, as, as black and white and, and the p- paper. So, no, I, I don't think we need to have an open discussion. It, it's just gonna get bogged down in the meeting. We understand after years of, of, or not, a year of, almost a year of discussion of where we're at, I need to know that this city can afford to run a course with what we have now and, and hopefully we'll get that proven to us in the next month or next meeting. So no, I would not encourage the open conversation at, at the microphone. Please write an email, and do as you please because it, it just will facilitate the process.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion in front of us? Clarification? Seeing none, I will call for a vote to table until next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That carries four to one. Council, on to public hearings. We have the annual MS4 permit.
Mayor and members of the council, a requirement, um, that the city has to uphold is to, um, have a permit from the MPCA for the discharge of storm water. This, um, permit through the cit- that the city is required to have, um, is for MS4 general permit and it has six minimum control measures, um, which encompass many requirements that the city of Sartell must comply with. One of these requirements is hosting a, the public an opportunity to comment on our city's MS4, MS4 program. And MS4 stands for Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. We are also required to submit an annual permit by the 30th of, June 30th of each year. However, this year, they, the state of Minnesota and MPCA is working on a new e-service for that, um, permit. So next year, we'll be required to submit for our MS4 activities from the past two years, which I maintain those records of. Um, so in the attachments is just our SIMWIA annual report. And if you have any other questions, just based around tho- that information, um, April or I can respond to that. However, this is just, um, an opportunity for the public to respond, um, and provide comments. There is no motions requested of council.
Council, before I open the public hearing specific to the annual MS4 permit, is there any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify- Anyone wishing to testify on the annual MS four permit, please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the annual MS four permit, please step forward? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, council, we've, we've completed the public hearing on the annual MS four permit. Uh, as staff stated, no motion or additional actions needed. We'll move on to the rezone of three oh six, Fourth Avenue South, Sartell Public Works.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. We're looking for a rezone of our Public Works campus to get more in line with our, with our zoning requirements. Um, we're, we're going from B two general business to light industrials, what we're asking for tonight.
Council, uh, there's a request by Public Works to rezone their facility. Are there any questions? I was able to hear some of the commentary at the planning commission and, and more uh, around, maybe I can summarize, but, uh, the stockpile, the screening. What am I missing, Carrie?
Yeah, and also our proposed, um, outdoor storage, um, ordinance. So we'll hopefully coincide with, um, our ordinance is, if approved, on the twenty-second. So, um, for country lights, they store, um, all, there's some of their items in storage containers. Um, and with the proposed ordinance, we'd align with our own ordinance in place. Um, and then any additional improvements to the Public Works facility, um, we would have then coincide with our screening requirement ordinance, um, and landscaping for surrounding properties.
Council, any questions on that rezone request? Seeing none, I would look for a motion on the Public Works rezone?
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? That carries. On to, uh, department reports. Public Works, Engineering.
Good evening, mayors, members of the council. You have our report. If you'd like to ask any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Council, any questions for Public Works or Engineering? Seeing none, thank you. Fire.
Assistant Chief Luke Stingland filling in for Chief Kudrowski tonight. Couldn't be here, uh, but mayor and council members, uh, the fire report's in your packet. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have in regards to it.
Council, any questions on fire?
I have a question. Page four.
Yeah, here we go.
Page four on the, um, oh, never mind, disregard.
Okay. Any other questions for Fire Department? Any at all? All right, thank you. Police.
Mayor, members of the council, you have our report. Let me know if you have questions.
Any questions for PD? Thank you. Uh, council, on to city commission updates. Uh, staff, is there anything of note there?
The only commission updates I have is just some scheduling changes with Planning Commission, um, for the July meeting. It will be on the fifth, um, of July and then as well in September, the day after Labor Day, which is standard, um, modifications. Otherwise, no, um, further updates.
Great, thank you. Uh, city council committee updates, miscellaneous business. Tim?
Um, tonight was a lot, uh, topic on the golf course and, um, just know that, uh, I'm doing this out of clarity for, um, our own good. Uh, if you are to throw out that, um, the process being tainted and, and whatnot, um, it just, it's unfortunate. Um, but if it's, um, two weeks down the road and, and we get what we need to get, um, I fully support that process of what we just went through and, albeit three, two, or whatever the vote turns out to be, um, I, I just, um, a little disappointed in how we move forward, but I'm okay with the clarification.
Jill?
Nothing more this evening.
Alex? Jed?
I, I would just respond and say I, you know, at no point, point do I think it was tainted. I think it could have been more public. I think our open, our F P process could have been longer based on what our own appraisal was telling us on normal marketing standards, knowing that we had somebody that had a lot of information for a lot longer period of time. Would have given us a much, um, firmer stance on the open market. Um, and especially if we were to even list it at this price, I think, throw that out there for, um, any period of time and you're going to have a lot more people that would come forward based on eighty-one acres in the heart of Sartell. That's, that's all I'm trying to say and none of this is personal. It's, it's ultimately just what I believe as a council member, what I believe the people who voted for me, um, expect me to say.
Um, two updates, uh, I guess. One is, uh, Route thirty-two, which is the Sartell Metro Bus Route within the city of Sartell. Uh, that service started, restarted yesterday. Um, previous to that, for the last, I believe, three years, we've had the connect service. Um, and so that service has gone away and we're back to seeing, um, buses down Pinecone uh, and throughout our community. And so, uh, anyone interested in taking Metro Bus within the Sartell community, I'd encourage you to go on to the Metro Bus site and get the details there. It's Route thirty-two, which covers the city of Sartell. Um, and then close that, I, I, I think we've had, we had passionate debate tonight. Um, I hope none of it was personal. Um, I, I, I think it actually shows democracy, um, at work and that we, we shouldn't have, we're not always going to agree, but we need to be civil, we need to be, uh, um, we need to work together as a council and, and, um, I, I think we will. So I appreciate all the discussion and debate tonight. It'll continue, I'm, I'm certain, in a positive light. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll make a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? We're adjourned.